Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for coming to the board member tonight. At this time, I will ask for the presentation of colors and will you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, Chair of the C C if you'll stand still just a second. That's okay. They're doing what they're supposed to. I just wanted to share Ethan Barnwell. Ethan, will you wave at everybody? Ethan is about to graduate. Next month, he will be joining the United States Navy to serve all of us. And we're certain we're here for it.
I'd also like to recognize the instructors for this group of young men. And that is Colonel Brooke King from the United States Army and Sergeant First Class Jeffrey Garland from the United States Army. We appreciate their instruction and what they're doing for our students. At this time, as you remain standing, I would ask that you focus your thoughts tonight on people that have suffered by injury and are traveling down a difficult road. We have several in our population that that's true for, so please send your spirits their way. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I am seeking a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you. A second? Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Our good news tonight, I'll recognize Mr. Almer. Is it? Excuse me. I wasn't going to let our superintendent talk tonight, so.
I understand.
So, thank you. Dr. Jackson?
Good evening, parents, members of the community, board members, and teammates. It's hard to believe that another school year is rapidly drawing to a close. As we approach the last day and a half with students, we do so feeling grateful for having had the opportunity to serve families in our community. We have just learned that Buncombe County Schools has been identified by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction as an academically intellectually gifted AIG Promising District. This award will be presented to the school system during the September Board of Education meeting. This is another indicator of the incredibly positive momentum in all areas of our work. I'm very proud of our efforts across our forty-five schools to support and challenge our AIG students. I'm also very proud of our AIG specialist Stephanie Knox for her leadership across our district. The award letter that I received from the State Department says, quote, "Your district exemplifies an unwavering commitment to students and staff as well as innovation." The letter goes on to state, quote, "Buncombe County Schools is leading the way in our state and showcasing the profound impact that dedication to academic excellence can have on student success." Let me read that again. Buncombe County Schools is leading the way in our state and showcasing the profound impact that dedication to academic excellence can have on student success. I know that the success that our students are experiencing academically, artistically, and athletically is due to the strong support we enjoy from parents and families and to the amazing and dedicated educators throughout our school system. Last Friday night, we had the opportunity to attend and celebrate graduation ceremonies for our progressive education program, the Buncombe County Schools Early College, and the Buncombe County Middle College. Next week, we will attend graduation ceremonies at our nine other high schools. As we do, we gather together with parents, family members, loved ones, teachers, administrators, and staff members to celebrate the preeminent accomplishment of our students' academic careers. Each of our eleven high schools gather as learning communities to commemorate an incredible milestone in a young person's life: graduation. We celebrate our students on this incredible achievement. Through their hard work and through the support of their families, they have earned their high school diploma. I also want to acknowledge and to recognize each of the educators who have supported and encouraged, who have challenged and pushed, who have loved and cared for our graduates for the last thirteen years of their lives. From the instructional assistants to the bus drivers, to the child nutritionists, to the custodians, to the office support personnel, to the teachers, to the school counselors, to the school social workers, to the student support teams, to the instructional support teams, to the administrators, and to all who are such important members of the Buncombe County Schools team. Thank you. With each name that is called next week, with each handshake, I celebrate you. Thank you for choosing to give so deeply of yourselves to our children who are so worthy of our very best efforts. To our graduates, as you prepare for the grand adventure that waits for you on the other side of that handshake, step forward knowing that you are well-prepared for the challenges that will pop up. You go with an incredible network of supporters. Your teachers will always be your teachers. Decades from now, when you see the wonderful person who served you lunch in elementary school, their face will light up with a huge smile and you will hear them say, "I'm so proud of you." We are proud of the class of two thousand twenty-four. With you go our hopes and dreams and the life's work of countless educators. To our team and to our board members, thank you for all that you do for the students, families, teachers, and staff at Buncombe County Schools. And thank you for making this our finest school year ever. Madam Chair, this concludes my comments.
I'm glad you got a time to speak, Dr. Jackson. It was very enlightening, was it not? Okay, now then, Mr. Almer, do you have some good news for us?
Do I have good news, Madam Chair? Yes, I do. Good news begins tonight with a greeting to you, board members, Dr. Jackson, BCS teammates and families. Once again, Buncombe County Schools is proving that we are indeed the home of the champions. And bring in my, yes. So, we're going to begin the news tonight with the sports report and Coach David Barr, District Athletic Specialist.
Madam Chair, speaking with members of the board, Dr. Jackson, BCS staff, and special guests are here with us this evening. It is my honor to present good news about athletics from the spring sports season for Buncombe County Schools. I will begin with a brief summary of our school's spring accomplishments. First, at the middle school level, Buncombe County Middle Schools won eight regular season or tournament conference championships. We had three teams: Inca Middle School softball, North Buncombe Middle School baseball, and Valley Springs Middle School women's soccer programs that won regular season and tournament conference championships. At the high school level, Buncombe County Schools won eleven regular season conference championships. We had seven athletes selected as Conference Player of the Year. We had ten coaches selected as Conference Coach of the Year. Many of our teams went on to participate in the NCHSA playoffs or qualified for NCHSA hosted state tournaments. Tonight, we would like to recognize two student athletes who won individual state championships in track and five student athletes who won state championships as part of two relay teams in track. First, I would like to introduce Treve Woodard of Owen High School. Treve, if you'll come down to the front here. Treve won the state championship in the NCHSA. Treve won the state championship in the NCHS two A state track meet in the three hundred meter hurdles. Supporting Treve is Owen High Principal Dawn Rookie and Athletic Director Chris Collins and Dr. Jackson and Ms. Buchanan. And we're ready for pictures. Thank you. Congratulations, Treve. Next, I would like to introduce Graham Cannon of Inca High School. Graham won the state championship in the NCHSA A three A state track meet in the shot put. Supporting Graham this evening is Inca High Principal Mr. Jeff Burlison, and School Board Member Judy Lewis and Dr. Jackson. Graham, I saw your video of your championship throw. You looked like you were really pumped on that last shot. Congratulations, Graham. Last, I would like to introduce Sophia Banks, Bailey Barrett, Eden Barnwell, Maya Flynn, and Katie Johnson of North Buncombe High School. A few ladies will come down. Supporting them is Principal Mr. Kevin Yance and Superintendent Dr. Jackson. Coming soon, Ms. Franklin, our chair. Katie, Maya, Eden, and Sophia won the NCHSA A three A state championship in the four by eight hundred meter relay. Maya, Eden, Bailey, and Sophia won the state championship in the four by four hundred meter relay. Ladies, congratulations on these two state championships and your role in helping the North Buncombe Women's Team finish third overall in the state tournament. But also, go ahead, another round for them, yeah. Would also like to mention that Sophia and Katie attend Nesbit. Eden attends the Virtual Academy, takes classes at the Virtual Academy. Bailey and Maya are students at North Buncombe High School. So, a great collection of individuals representing North Buncombe High School. Athletes, thank you for being here tonight. We are honored to be able to recognize and congratulate you on your tremendous athletic accomplishments. I would like to ask the athletes to please stay until the end of the good news section. At that time, we're going to move you outside, take a group picture of all seven of you outside. So, we'll do that at the end of the good news section. Lastly, our spring sports season came to an exciting conclusion on Saturday afternoon in Burlington, North Carolina, with the Robertson High School baseball team winning the NCHSA A four A state championship for the second year in a row. Congratulations to Coach Philippeck, his coaching staff, the players, and the Robertson baseball community for this tremendous accomplishment. Dr. Jackson and I had a great time in Burlington on Saturday, celebrating with the Robertson baseball team and their supporting community. Madam Chair, this concludes my good news. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Barr. It has also been an incredible year for the arts in Buncombe County Schools, led the last full month of school, featuring end-of-year concerts and performances. If we could invite Ms. Jenny Lanier of TC Robertson High School down with art specialist Laura Mitchell, Mr. Allison, the principal, and Ms. Churchill. Ms. Lanier is in her twentieth year of teaching, and her TC Robertson High School bands have had consistent, superior ratings throughout the year under her direction. Buncombe County Schools is excited to honor her tonight for being the recipient of the Western Regional Award of Excellence from the North Carolina Band Masters Association. Ms. Lanier, congratulations to you. We also celebrate tonight the leadership of Christopher Lavignette of Irwin Middle School. If you will come forward, please, Mr. Lavignette, along with Ms. Clemmons and Mr. Collins. Mr. Lavignette is a dynamic educator. He's grown the Irwin Middle School band from fifty-two students to about a hundred and fifty in just a few short years. We are proud that Mr. Lavignette received the Ed Rooker Encore Award from the North Carolina Chapter of the American School Band Directors Association. And that is an award presented to outstanding band directors with fewer than seven years' experience in the band-directing, teaching profession. Congratulations, Mr. Lavignette of Irwin Middle School. Also tonight, we would love to celebrate the leadership of Ms. Lakeisha Lee, the administrative intern at Oakley Elementary. Ms. Lee, if you will join us, along with Dr. Stolti, the Oakley Principal, and Mr. Elliott. So, Ms. Lakeisha Lee is the recipient of the Western Carolina University Courageous Leadership Award. Her projects have helped build stronger relationships with families and have led to improved behaviors in the school community. We are so proud to celebrate Ms. Lee tonight and so glad that she has shared her passion and leadership skills with Buncombe County Schools. Congratulations, Ms. Lee. I don't know if this is going to sound like a pop quiz, because it isn't, but have you kept count of how many people we've honored tonight? Because if you haven't, I want to introduce you to somebody who I bet knows. He's very good with numbers. Tenzin Hartshorn of Owen Middle School. If you will please come forward with your math teacher, Mr. Sapp, and your assistant principal, Ms. Davis, and Ms. Buchanan, if you'll come join us as well. Let me tell you about Tenzin. He has been an active member of the math team this year. He's been a top-ten medalist in the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics State Math One Regional Contest. He's been in the Western Carolina Math One Contest, a great representative of Owen Middle School and Buncombe County Schools, competing on local, regional, and state levels. He's got a lot of hardware to prove it. Congratulations, Tenzin. And tonight, we would also like to celebrate a BCS teammate who takes students around the world virtually with virtual reality trips. She helps them find the perfect books for research papers or reading for fun. She also helps kids and teachers alike with the black screen of death that appears on our devices. She is a leader in her school, collaborating with teachers and providing a welcoming space for students. She has been called by Principal Ben Alexander, the hub of her school. If you've got a question, she has the answer. If you would please come forward, the Buncombe County Schools Media Coordinator of the Year, Ms. Lee Armistead of A.C. Reynolds High School. Instructional technology facilitator, and Mr. Elliott. And Ms. Armistead actually makes history by becoming the very first Buncombe County Schools Media Coordinator of the Year. So, she's blazing trails and doing amazing things. Congratulations to you, Ms. Armistead. You can follow all the good news. So much going on. Graduation photos coming soon to buncomeschools.org and follow us on social media. A reminder of all our championship track and field athletes can follow Michaela outside for a group photo. And Madam Chair, that concludes this month's good news report.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Almer, and I'm really glad I found time for you to do that.
I am too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's now time for the curriculum feature, and I'll recognize Dr. Reed and Mara Brower.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Jackson, and members of the board. I'm going to do my best to top those accolades that we all just celebrated together, and I think I'm going to be able to do it. I'm really excited about what we have to share tonight about our brand-new Teacher of the Year for Buncombe County Schools. It is no secret that Buncombe County Schools is blessed with amazing educators. When it comes to our teachers, we do have so much to be thankful for. In fact, just under twenty percent of our educators are National Board certified in Buncombe County Schools. That places us around seventeenth in the nation for National Board certified teachers. Of our almost two thousand educators, around fifty percent have fifteen or more years of teaching experience. Our students in Buncombe County Schools are well-cared-for every day. They experience high-quality classroom environments and are just in such capable hands from the teachers in our system. Tonight, we honor one of those amazing teachers whose colleagues chose her to represent the Buncombe County School System as their brand-new Teacher of the Year, but I'm not going to tell you who it is quite yet. First, I would like to welcome Ms. Mara Brower, who stands beside me. She has been our Teacher of the Year Extraordinary this year. She is a teacher, a science teacher, at A.C. Reynolds High School. She has gone above and beyond the call of duty this year to serve in that capacity. She's one of my favorite people. I have enjoyed getting to know her and work alongside her this year and couldn't be more impressed with her as a person and the caliber that she brings to us through her professionalism and her dedication. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mara Brower to tell us the rest of the story.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Jackson, members of the board, and everyone here tonight. It has finally happened. The committee has chosen and the official honor has been bestowed upon our new Buncombe County Schools Teacher of the Year. I am so excited for tonight, partially because we're able to celebrate the amazing Martha Talent and all that she does, both in and out of the classroom. Additionally, though, it has given me the opportunity to reflect on the last school year while having that same title. As I've mentioned at a few speaking events in the past several months, being Buncombe County Teacher of the Year has been an incredible honor for a multitude of reasons. I've learned the ins and outs of so many nuances of our county's education system. I've worked with the amazing central office staff in multiple capacities, and I now pretty much have Ken Almer's phone number on speed dial, so we're good there. But the most rewarding part has been meeting so many inspiring educators throughout our county. I've talked to educators from every grade level and subject, and their unique experiences have been incredibly eye-opening and have even influenced my own practices within my classroom. This recognition has also shown me the amazing things happening in our schools. From innovative programs to creative initiatives, the dedication of all of our teachers truly shines. It's been a privilege to learn and grow alongside them, and I'm so unbelievably excited to share this experience as Martha takes on the same role. I'm so excited for you, Martha. This has been absolutely awesome. Her genuine enthusiasm for what she does brings a smile to the faces of all of your students and everyone that sees you teach. I'm not sure she's really going to appreciate me saying this, but every single person in here should go to her classroom and see her in action. She is phenomenal. She is meant to do this, and I've just, I'm getting tearful just thinking about how special what it is that you do. It's truly phenomenal. She went through quite the process to get to this point. She, you know, was awarded the initial Teacher of the Year for the middle school, and then she got to write some papers, and we got to read them, and then we said, "Okay, but wait, there's more." And then she let me come into her classroom and film her. She gave us this incredible speech. She was wonderful in her interview, and it has just been an absolutely incredible experience getting to know her and see what she's capable of doing for our entire education community. I know with a hundred percent certainty that together, all of us and the teachers that we have within our county can keep making positive impacts on our students' lives as we continue to collaborate together and share the same positive vision for our students and families here in Buncombe County. Thank you to all who have worked through this role, and congratulations to Ms. Martha Talent for being named the Buncombe County Schools 2025 Teacher of the Year. Oh, congratulations. Thank you. And I didn't mention, this is Martha Talent from Inca Middle School, eighth-grade science teacher. Go science.
As we're transitioning, I would like to add a little anecdote that Ms. Talent happened to teach my own child in eighth-grade science. I had nothing to do with her being chosen as Teacher of the Year, but I can tell you, from that parent perspective, she's just truly incredible and so deserving of this honor.
All right, Dr. Reed, it's report time.
It's me again. All right. Good evening. I've come tonight to give a report on the school system consolidation feasibility study. It's my pleasure to partner with Buncombe County's Director of Strategic Partnerships, Rachel Sawyer, who's here this evening, to bring you an update on the consolidation feasibility study that was initiated last fall by the North Carolina General Assembly. Soon after the General Assembly mandated the study, both boards, Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools, decided that Buncombe County Government would serve as the facilitator of the process. Rachel Sawyer assumed the lead facilitator role at that time, for which we are very grateful. And then, a local project team made up of members of both school systems and the Buncombe County Government was formed. The first assignment of that team was to design a request for proposals for an outside vendor to conduct the study, which is currently well underway. In a few moments, Ms. Sawyer, who is here with us tonight, will share more details about the work of the study thus far, which has included an extensive data upload by members of all three entities and the plans to carry out the remainder of that process. So, tonight, in addition to a shout-out to all of those Buncombe County Schools team members who have taken part in that extensive data upload, I would like to pay a very special recognition to the Buncombe County Schools members of that local project team for the time and the energy that they have put into the process so far, and their work is not finished. The role of that team is to provide ongoing guidance and feedback to ensure that the project is being carried out according to the definition of success that they created in Fall of 2023, which was to ensure that the process was both comprehensive and rigorous, and also that it centered equity, community engagement, and data, both qualitative and quantitative. Ultimately, the role of that team is really to serve as a guardrail to make sure that we're staying within our own definition of success of the project. Tonight, I would like to ask Mr. Ken Almer to come on up with me to help me recognize the members of that local project team before we get started with Ms. Sawyer's report. The first member I would like to come on down is Ms. Avery. Next is Mr. Steve Earwood. Steve is our Director of Testing and Accountability and has served as part of that team, but also part of the massive data upload project that we have been engaged in. Thank you, Steve. Next is our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Tina Thorpe, who has served a very crucial role on the committee in that data upload project as well. Ms. Thorpe, we thank you for your service. And next is Mr. Clark Wyatt. Clark Wyatt is our Director of Maintenance and Facilities for Buncombe County Schools. He has also served on that team, but also part of that data upload process, which continues to happen. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. I would like to personally thank Mr. Ken Almer for his service on the team as well. Thank you, Mr. Almer, for stepping in. And last, but certainly not least, is Rachel Sawyer. We are so grateful for your leadership as part of this project team.
Rachel's not a guard, she just got there. She's with the county. One, two, three.
Now, at this time, Rachel Sawyer will be presenting a little bit more about where we are in the study.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the generous recognition. Dr. Reed did a great job providing background about the project, so I'll try to keep it brief. For those of you who I have not yet met or worked with before, my name is Rachel Sawyer, and I work in capacity as the Strategic Partnerships Director for Buncombe County, which typically is helping with Buncombe County's funding and grants and educational partnerships. And in the instance of this project, I've been serving as project manager, doing not the work of carrying out the study, as you'll hear, but really offering coordination and communication, as there are so many partners working together on this. Are you seeing my slides? Okay, great. So, this board is no stranger to being a recipient of legislative mandates, and this is another instance. The North Carolina General Assembly enacted a law requiring us here locally to undertake a study to look at the feasibility of merging Buncombe County Schools and Asheville City Schools. We've included the full text of the legislation in your packet, so you've got this as a reference. But what I wanted to point out is that they've asked us to look at educational and economic impact, which makes sense, and also other relevant information. And when we met with our project team here locally, they really called out the depth and breadth to which they believe that data and information and perceptions should be gathered to inform this study. So that is underway, and it will conclude with reporting findings and recommendations back to the General Assembly by next February. As Dr. Reed mentioned, we give a lot of credit to this board and also the Board of Education for Asheville City Schools, who both jumped into quick action. Within a week and a half of having this legislation enacted, the school boards had voted to ask Buncombe County Government to serve as lead for the study. Commissioners voted to accept that later in October. As you heard, this work is guided by a diverse local project team, who is here to ensure that we have diverse perspectives that represent many aspects of school system operations and represent many voices of people who are stakeholders impacted by those schools. That local project team initially assisted with designing the solicitation to hire the firm who is doing the study, and now that the study is underway, that team is providing ongoing feedback and guidance. Buncombe County, where I work, is providing coordination and oversight of that contract with the vendor, who I'll talk about in just a moment, who is conducting the study. We did identify funding out of Buncombe County General Funds. We hope to have that reimbursed to the local community by the General Assembly, but that is pending. The school systems are jointly contributing to the study. You've heard mention of the massive data upload that is underway. The representatives throughout both systems have been exceedingly responsive to the requests for information and data and interviews that have been underway so far. The community will have a key role in providing input to inform the study, and I'll talk more about community engagement in a moment. And ultimately, we have a contracted vendor that's completing the study. The scope of work, which has been given to this vendor, was designed by the local project team. We wanted a study that would be rigorous and comprehensive, so you can see all of those different domains that are listed there that we've asked them to look at. We wanted the study to center equity and center community engagement and be reflective of data, both quantitative and qualitative, in its analysis. It will conclude with a report from the vendor to the county with a summary of all of the activities, as well as their findings, and it will include recommendations from the vendor, and I'll revisit that in a moment. Just as background, we conducted a competitive proposal process for selecting the vendor. There were seven proposals ultimately submitted back in January that ranged in price from under $60,000 to $1,500,000, ultimately awarded to a firm with a price tag of roughly $300,000. I'll talk more about Prismatic Services on the next slide, but first, a few notes of what members of the review team had pointed out. The review team was a subset of that larger local project team. They believed that this firm was showing up with a strong understanding of the project and its context, that they had done their research on our community and on the previous studies that have occurred in the past on this very same topic, that they asked great questions and brought a good experienced staff. The team found that the staff seemed hands-on and candid, as well as confident and competent and knowledgeable, and important to the team was the objectivity that they come with, not vested in the outcome of what this study says, but looking for information to compel them toward recommendation. They also brought with them a lot of onsite time. So Prismatic Services is the vendor. They are headquartered here in North Carolina and Charlotte, and they have 11 consultants that are assigned to this project that will be conducting more than 1,800 hours of work with a large amount of onsite time, and that hands-on approach is really valuable to the trustworthiness that what will come out on the other end of this study will be a high-quality product. I mentioned the boots on the ground, they bring a project management approach, dedication to ongoing communication, both within the team participants as well as with the community, bring a lever, a level of rigor that will inform the ultimate reporting. On the timeline, just wanted to point out, August through October is when the bulk of the community engagement will occur. That will include public meetings, focus groups, surveys, and an online forum that is being created, co-created between the vendor and the communication teams of Buncombe County Government, Buncombe County Schools, Asheville City Schools, and partnering with our network of different community-based organizations so that we can talk with folks at all walks of life throughout Asheville and Buncombe County to gather their input. Ultimately, we will have a report in hand by the end of the calendar year. Well underway, during the first major onsite period, many folks in this room were participants in the interview. There are 43 different interviews that occurred that week, 21 different schools were visited that week, and we've been busy chipping away at that 220-item initial data request list. There will be a second onsite period that occurs later during the month of June, and then it will pick back up as school returns to session in August and September. So, where do we end at the end of the study? We will have a report in hand from Prismatic Services, which contractually they need to deliver to us no later than December 31st. We've also required that they make public presentations of their study and the findings and the recommendations to the governing bodies, including Buncombe County Board of Education, as well as Asheville's Board of Education and Buncombe County Government. One idea that came up when talking to county commissioners, and we've also floated with the city school board, is the potential to have a joint meeting of those three bodies to hear the presentation and report together. So staff will be exploring the feasibility of putting something like that together. We also heard a request when I presented the same information to the Asheville School Board to get as much advanced time with the information as possible, because it really will be quite a short runway between when the final report is in our hands in December and when the recommendations are due back to the state in mid-February. So we will work to try to bring to you all regular updates and opportunities to be prepared to respond to those recommendations. I also finally just want to point out, while we've asked the vendor to bring us recommendations, it is ultimately the Buncombe County Board of Education and the Asheville City Board of Education who will make the recommendations that go back to the state. So, a way that it could work is we receive and discuss, and then the boards could consider affirming, amending, or responding to those recommendations in whatever way is held at the discretion of this entity. So, much of that is TBD, what exactly the recommendation will look like, is it a single recommendation, is it a package of recommendations? We will work with your primary liaison on the county school staff side, which is Dr. Reed, and that local project team and our other partners to try to set you up as best as possible so that you can respond when these recommendations come in. It wasn't our idea here locally to study the feasibility of merging these two districts, and with this mandate that has come our way, it's our intent to do right by that and approach that with integrity, and in all seriousness, consider what that would entail. So, more to come. That is all I have prepared. I'm happy to respond to questions, or we can also follow up.
All right, thank you. We have, I'm not clear here, what?
I was worried about asking you whether you had questions, because I wasn't sure if that was my spot.
Is it appropriate for us to do that at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, do you have questions of her?
I just have one to clarify. Your last slide, it said that the boards of education, or the law requires the boards of education to, could you put that back, is there a way to put that slide back up?
The law says the, oh, sorry. The law says that the both boards shall report findings and recommendations to the General Assembly.
Okay. So, yeah, no, perhaps my understanding obviously was wrong, but I had understood that it was the Board of, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners that ultimately had the, I guess, delegated the power to actually make that final recommendation. I didn't know that it was both of our boards that sent the information directly to, the recommendation directly to the General Assembly. I thought it came from the Board of Commissioners to the General Assembly. That's not correct.
I appreciate you raising it, and it's a theme of, an area that we've had a lot of questions throughout the process. So what we've tried to do is give you the exact language from the legislation, and our interpretation is that it is the authority to provide the recommendations is held by Buncombe County School Board and Asheville City School Board. The county commissioners could have a role in merging, based on state law. My understanding is there's three ways that districts could merge. County commissioners could vote to do that, that's one of the paths. The districts themselves could vote to merge, that's a second path, or the General Assembly could vote to merge, and that would be the third path. Buncombe County Government did not initiate this study and is here as a resource and support, but not as the holder of the recommendation.
Got it. Yeah, I think, I think the scenario, I'm thinking in my mind, I think I'm recalling now, is that, so if you have two boards of education, one recommends yes, one recommends no, and they, both of those recommends go to the state. At that point, since both boards didn't fully agree, right, because I understand there's three ways it can happen. Both boards agree, county commissioners say do it, or the General Assembly says do it. And so if both boards don't agree, then, and it goes to the General Assembly, we're still, either the General Assembly or the commissioners could still look at our recommendations and say, "Thanks, but we feel the best path at this point in time is to go ahead and consolidate." Or vice versa, right? I mean, we could both recommend consolidation, and either one of those entities could then say, "We don't think you should, so you're not."
Yeah, that's accurate.
But even, but I mean, if, I guess if we both agree, yes, then we both agree, so it isn't, I mean, I guess they could still override that.
Certainly, the General Assembly can override that. So the General Assembly gives it, the General Assembly takes it away, right? So, if both boards agreed to do it, there is a, there is a very outlined process on how those boards would be able to accomplish that, including doing your own report and request to the Department of Public Instruction, and I think, and having to get the DPI to approve that as well. But the General Assembly could potentially step in and stop that. I don't, I don't know if they would do that, but I think the greater point is, is that if both boards could say, "No, we don't believe consolidation is the best pathway forward," the General Assembly could still consolidate, if that's what the General Assembly wanted to do. As well as the county, although there are some, there are some specific issues that the county would have to overcome in regards to funding if the county chose to merge the two systems. So ultimately, it would most likely be in the hands of the General Assembly or the two boards themselves.
So we were, sorry, one more question on the timeline, because I remember this feeling rather quick. So we're going to receive a report from the study group, or the consultant, I guess, by what date?
No later than December 31st. However, as, between the period of October and December, we believe that they'll be honing in and may have some early versions of their recommendations, or drafts, or guidance where they can provide information to this board around what they've been taking into consideration to try to move that up. But the report itself is due no later than December 31st.
So worst-case scenario, we have a report December 31st, and then we, by the law, we have to make the recommendation from the two boards by February the 15th.
Yep, we've got roughly six weeks.
And did you mention anything about capturing public comment around this topic in between that, between now and December 31st? Or is that anticipated that the school boards of education would handle that between December 31st and February 15th?
That's an interesting question that I hadn't fully thought through. Public comment on the process has a plethora of oppo-
rather quick. So we're going to receive a report from the study group, or the consultant, I guess. By what date?
No later than December thirty-first. However, as, between the period of October and December, we believe that they'll be honing in and may have some early versions of their recommendations, or drafts, or guidance where they can provide information to this board around what they've been taking into consideration to try to move that up. But the report itself is due no later than December thirty-first.
So worst-case scenario, we have a report December thirty-first, and then we, by the law, we have to make the recommendation from the two boards by February the fifteenth.
Yep, we've got roughly six weeks.
And did you mention anything about capturing public comment around this topic in between that, between now and December thirty-first, or is that anticipated that the school boards of education would handle that between December thirty-first and February fifteenth?
That's an interesting question that I hadn't fully thought through. Public comment on the process has a plethora of opportunities to be captured, to inform the report. Public comment on the report itself, we can build into the process. All three entities that are receiving the report have methods for allowing public comment, and it would be delivered in a public meeting.
Thanks.
Rachel, I have one just clarifying question. So, I understand the recommendation, I didn't understand it that way until tonight, that the...
Kim, speak into the mic.
...recommendation would be from the county and city board of education. If, let's just say, for discussion purposes, we both say we're against it, can the county commissioners overrule that? Did you, did you clarify that?
The county commissioners haven't specified whether or not they will also want to vote on affirming the recommendations or responding to the recommendations. They obviously have a stake and an interest in the topic.
Sure they do.
From my understanding, the authority wasn't delegated to make recommendations from the schools to the county. So it would be in addition.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? I certainly appreciate the cooperation that we've had between our school systems and the commissioners, and especially your work. Thank you very much.
Indeed, thank you for having me, and thank you for the legal support during the technical questions, and appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll, it's time for public comment, and I'll recognize our attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's now time for public comment. As a reminder, speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. All speakers will have three minutes, and you will see a timer on the dais. When the light turns yellow, you'll have thirty seconds left, and when it turns red, your time, your time is up. All speakers are reminded of the guidelines set forth in Board Policy 2310. We ask that you not use profane language, that you make threats, or you reveal confidential student or staff information. Please address the board in your comments, and please note that the board is not able to respond directly to public comment as well.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, we have six public comments tonight. First is Misty Childs. Just a reminder, please introduce yourself and the district where you reside.
Hi, my name is Misty Childs, and I'm in the Reynolds District. Apologies for looking at my phone. This is where I made my notes. I'm here tonight to advocate for my second grader in the Reynolds District because he's unable to advocate for himself. My son is on the autism spectrum, but the word autism, excuse me, the word autism does not define I'm sorry, but it's an important distinction to make for what I'd like to say tonight. Sorry, let me get it together. This year was his first school year without a behavioral assistant assisting him one-on-one in the classroom. He had one in kindergarten and in first grade. I'm here to speak and update you on how that's been going this year in second grade. I thought the feedback would be essential for your decision-making process, as well to see how a child on the spectrum did with an assistant this year. You will soon be receiving, if you haven't already, a report in your email box that I sent to my district rep, who should share it sometime soon. Many of these therapists in my report have been working with my child for a minimum of two years and some for four years or more. Across the board, the collective data and reports have shown regression, regression, regression in behavioral skills, and communication skills, regression in peer-to-peer interactions, and regression in speech as well. I'm very sorry. Apologies. As a parent of a child who didn't speak until he was four and a half, this news is devastating to me as a parent, and it didn't need to happen this way. He worked so hard to get up with his typical peers over the years, and he was making such progress. It was very imperative for him to have the one-on-one in the classroom with him. And it helped him so much during kindergarten and first grade. I cannot leave out the teachers at his school, have been amazing and supportive, but even the best teachers in the world without more classroom support are overwhelmed. I thought today, what would my child want me to say to you guys here tonight if he understood what was going on? I imagine he would want me to say that he loves learning, when the concepts are explained to him in a way he can understand. I would imagine he would want you to know he's really smart and loves numbers and needs more time to process the equations. He would want you to know that if you explained it in a different way, he would understand it. I think he would say he misses having an assistant to ask for help when he needs it, and having an assistant who knows when he needs a break. He may also tell you how he taught himself the Russian alphabet, or how he knows how many zeros are in octillion or decillion. He may tell you that library and music are his favorite days at school. One thing I do know he'd want you to know is children like him learn differently. They just need help to unlock the mystery of what you're asking of them. These children have so much potential to be the next Albert Einsteins, Charles Darwins, Barbara McClintocks, and Isaac Newtons. Giving them extra support in the classroom is a step in the right direction to learning about their potential. I know this is one child's experience and only my own's, but I'm hoping being an advocate for my child will amplify the needs of other children in Buncombe County. Dr. O. Arver-Lavas said it best, "If a child cannot learn in a way we teach him, we must teach in a way a child can learn."
My name is Bill Robinson. I'm the father of two girls, the grandfather of two more, and I live in the Roberson School District. Just want to say to the lady who spoke before me that I'll be praying for your second grader. This is Kylie Wilhelm. Kylie Wilhelm was a thirteen-year-old seventh grader in the Owen Middle School until May twelfth. She came home the night before from a chorus event there, where she was pursued by the furries and a band of suicide bullies, and she hung herself the next morning. This is Supriya Bozeman, sixteen-year-old young girl from Reynolds High School, who last year also committed suicide. These are two young girls whose spirits I don't want to die. I have longed for over a year, come before the board, saying that I, alleging that this board has swept these deaths under the carpet. Let's move to another topic where the board has swept things under the carpet. From the Citizen Times, dated February fifth, twenty-twenty-four, "Child Sexual Abuse Lawsuit: Family Sues Buncombe County Board of Education." At some point, you're going to have to address this, and you're going to have to update the public. You need to be hauled before the media to discuss this. "The family of a former Clyde Irwin high school student sued the Buncombe County Board of Education for their role presiding over a teacher who sexually abused their child. The lawsuit filed in Buncombe County Superior Court January thirtieth accuses the board of negligently hiring, retaining, and supervising Albert Pavan, an exceptional child children student at Irwin. It also accuses the board of negligence for inflicting emotional distress against the child. This was a fifteen-year-old girl. How could you allow this to happen? The complaint alleges that Pavan groomed the child, who was fifteen at the time, so he could sexually abuse, manipulate, and molest her. This included making sexual advances and sending lewd comments and pictures through Snapchat. Pavan touched the student's body parts, including her inner thigh, and made comments like, 'Once the plaintiff graduated, he was going to slam her against the wall,' unquote, and would allow the student to perform a sex act on him,' the complaint said. When they, quote, 'when they groom, they tend to look for the most vulnerable,' plaintiffs Greensboro attorney Bobby Jenkins told the Citizen Times, quote, 'then they start the grooming process, and it gets worse and worse as time goes on.'" That's clearly what this guy did. Other school and board employees raised concerns that Pavan's actions were disregarded by the school board administrators. Pavan served three months in central prison in Raleigh. Three months for doing this to a young girl. How dare you? When are you going to be held to accountability for this kind of misrepresentation, this kind of corruption?
Thank you, sir.
I'm so glad Mrs. Irwin gets left. She thought she had a conscience.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Fulton. I live in Arden, Roberson District. I'm one of the twenty-seven applicants for the recently vacated at-large seat on this board. I reached out to board members on the twenty-eighth to invite you to speak with me and learn more about my experiences and qualifications. I was thanked by several of you via email, but received no subsequent communication regarding my application. I'm joining today's meeting to make a case for my appointment to the vacant seat. Initially, I wondered if my lack of experience as an educator might negatively impact my candidacy. However, Buncombe County Schools already employs high-quality education professionals, and the board already includes several members with backgrounds in education. Therefore, I see this as an opportunity for the board to recruit diverse perspectives, rather than adding another educational, education professional. Diversity is often assessed through traits such as skin color, sexuality, physical handicaps, income level, or heritage. My perspective, shaped by my conservative upbringing and life experiences, offers a different kind of diversity that is equally important. I believe in the fundamental importance of education in shaping our future generations. With over twenty-seven years of experience as a technical project manager at FIS Management Services, I've developed strong skills in project management, financial operations, and navigating complex organizational structures. I think these skills can be valuable for effective school governance. My interest in this position stems from an upbringing that demonstrated commitment to community involvement and family values. My parents exemplified hard work and community service. This legacy has profoundly influenced my perspective on supporting our schools and ensuring they serve all students effectively. I have observed firsthand the significant impact that education and family support can have on a child's development. After a divorce, I remained positive influence in my daughter's life, supporting her through successes and challenges. This experience installed, instilled in me an understanding of the importance of strong familial and community support systems in helping children succeed. Today, many children and young adults appear to face challenges in basic life skills. I have, I have seen some young people struggle with tasks like making changes as a cashier or providing effective customer service. This lack of fundamental skills is concerning and emphasizes the need for schools to help students develop into mature, responsible citizens. I believe schools can...
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening, Jane Maulitz. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present this evening. The first three words of Article Nine, Section One of the North Carolina Constitution covering education are religion, morality, and knowledge. I struggle to understand how exposing children to graphic, explicit sexual content aligns with the North Carolina Constitution. There is a movement to use sex education for social change to fundamentally change society. Exposure to explicit sexual content to children is part of the CICUS agenda, which promotes CSE and the thinking that children are fully sexual beings. In fact, it's even part of the CICUS logo, Sex Ed for Social Change. There are numerous resources that support my statement, such as Social Reproduction Theory, the Kenzie Institute, Children of Table Thirty-Four, and experiments placing foster children with pedophiles, to name just a few. This has nothing to do with banning books, but rather providing children with age-appropriate materials. Just as there are age restrictions on a number of activities and movies, there should be age restrictions for books having explicit sexual content. From personal experience, I know how dangerous and harmful it is to expose children to explicit sexual content they are not equipped yet to process. We can all agree, regardless of political affiliation, that children should not be sexualized. I thank you for your support in protecting the innocence of childhood, and I have a copy of the Table of Children Thirty-Four to be scanned into public record. Thank you.
Kim Potte, Inca District, Madam Chair, Superintendent Jackson, Board, thank you. I would like to address the radical new changes to Title Nine and its impact on Buncombe County students and staff. Congress passed Title Nine in nineteen-seventy-two to prevent sexual discrimination. That is discrimination on the basis of biological sex in all education programs and activities that receive federal funding. On April nineteenth, Biden's Department of Education released a revised Title Nine with changes that are radical and harmful to all children. To put it simply, without congressional authorization, the Department of Education has redefined sex such that sex now equates with gender identity. So for our daughters and our sons, that means there are no safe private spaces. Biological males identifying as female will be invading our daughters' bathrooms, locker rooms, and even their overnight accommodations on field, on school field trips. And on the flip side, biological males identifying as male will be in our, or biological females identifying as males will be in our sons' bathrooms, locker rooms, and also in their overnight accommodations on school field trips. That's alarming and unsafe for all students. That's just the beginning of the bad news. The new Title Nine tramples on parental rights, setting schools up to adopt gender ideology, a philosophy based on faulty research, and then to teach this ideology to our children as fact in all grades and to possibly transition our children in secret. The bad news continues. The Title Nine violates free speech. Regardless of religious or personal belief, all students and all staff will be compelled to use the preferred name and pronoun under threat of a sex-based harassment claim. That's compulsion of speech. The new Title Nine represents a huge overreach by a government agency. These changes also violate North Carolina law, Verpa, and the First Amendment. So far, eight lawsuits have been filed. These lawsuits involve twenty-six states, eighteen school boards, and seven individual organizations. School districts throughout the country are not implementing these Title Nine changes. They are waiting for the legality of these regulations to be decided in the courts. You, as a school board, are under no obligation to align Buncombe County policies with these radical and harmful Title Nine regulations at this time. Please wait and see.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Metcalf. I am from the Roberson District. Thank you for this opportunity to share. And I too would like to discuss the radical changes to Title Nine that are slated to go into effect on August first. These changes have a huge impact on our families and on our school staff. I think every school board member should go on record with a simple yes or no to the following following questions. Do you support biological males dressing and undressing and watching our daughters dress and undress in our daughters' locker rooms in Buncombe County Schools? That's in Title IX. Do you support biological males using our daughters' restrooms in Buncombe County Schools at all ages? And do you support biological males rooming with our daughters in their rooms on overnight school field trips? And so we can turn that around to our boys, too. Do you support biological females in our sons' locker rooms, their restrooms, and in their hotel rooms on overnight school trips? All of these things are in the new Title IX. But what also is alarming, it's also addressed in our gender support guidelines, a regulation, not a policy, but it is under, the board can direct changes to these guidelines. I would also like to ask, do you support transitioning a child without parental knowledge or parental consent? It's set up because of the expansion of what it means in terms of sex-based harassment, that could happen under Title IX. And in our gender support guidelines, there is no parental consent mentioned. Do you support teaching gender ideology at all ages? Well, that's set up in Title IX, too. And that's against state law. Do you support all staff and all students being required to use the preferred name and pronouns regardless of religious objection or personal belief under the threat of a sex-based harassment claim? Well, that, too, is under the new Title IX. But we have nuances of that in the gender support guidelines. And I have asked these questions not to be adversarial, but to raise your awareness of the far-reaching implications of the new Title IX. The public needs, needs to know how you stand on these issues. I hope you will act in the best interest of Buncombe County families and just wait on the implementation of these radical regulations. Let's let the courts decide, and let's just wait and see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes tonight's public comments.
Should I take a break, ma'am?
If you want to.
Yes, let's take a break. Okay. Nathan, I think we're going to take a break, okay? Are you ready? Okay. I'm going to declare a break for about 10 minutes, and we'll reconvene in 10 minutes.
Thank you for joining us. We will continue on our agenda, and we're on the action item. Tonight, the first action item is the approval of summer school contracts. Do any of the board members have questions about this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I believe that's an approval in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, Estes Pep additions and renovations, and we need to, the motion is to accept the GMP and authorize the construction manager at risk to proceed. Questions for Mr. Wyatt? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, TC Robertson High School Reroofing Project Approval and Change Order. Any questions on this item? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 39, project funding request for Irwin Middle School ADA project. Any questions for Mr. Wyatt or Tina Thorpe on this item?
No, but it's needed, so I'll make the motion to approve it.
Sure, I'll take it. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, multi-district level lawsuit against social media companies, and I'm going to recognize our board attorney to discuss this or inform us of this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and board members, as, as you know, I think two meetings or two meetings ago, we had a special guest, an attorney come to us, talk about the multi-district litigation against social media companies in regards to the harm that social media is causing the youth, and how that harm also transcends to harm and damages against the school, requiring schools to put forth more resources, such as counselors and mental health, and just solving discipline problems that are created on, on social media. So since that time, I know the, at the last board meeting, the board asked to take in some public comment, and the school district did a survey, and I know Mr. Olmer is ready to present the results of the survey. So.
Board members, we sent out a survey to parents and staff on May 14th. It was open for two weeks. It was also reported by at least one of our media partners with the link to the survey as well. Over that two-week period, we had more than 1,800 responses. About two-thirds were parents of students, one-third were Buncombe County teammates. There were about 100 people that fell in both of those buckets. They worked for Buncombe County Schools and also have children in the system. The results of the survey on the question, I believe the Buncombe County Board of Education should join other schools in the lawsuit against social media companies, 89% of those respondents said yes, 11% said no. There were also 709 free response comments that were shared with the board last week for your review.
Thank you.
So, board members, after hearing those results, and if you want to make a decision, if you want to join the lawsuits against the social media companies, it would require board action. Obviously, if you do not want to do that, it would not require any board action at all. So I'm happy to entertain any questions from the board prior to, if anybody wants to make a motion, but open it up to you all.
I would just make a comment.
Sure, absolutely.
And that is, I am extremely excited about the number of responses we had, and it, it's obvious, and I go back to my sub-days, that, you know, phones are a problem, and we had a lot of comments about phones, and it, it is a problem in the classroom, and these kids are on social media. And, you know, I, I think social media is, I have a Facebook, but I don't use it for inappropriate things, and I just feel like that parents told us loud and clear that they wanted us to be involved in this lawsuit. So can I make a motion at this point, or would you like to have other discussions?
I'll accept a motion.
Okay, well, I would like to make a motion that we join this lawsuit.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I hear a motion and a second. Do we have discussion?
I just want to say one thing, you know, I appreciate the, the concept of this multi-district lawsuit. I didn't really understand what it meant at the time, but I do now, and I, I do speak in favor of the motion. I feel like what this focuses on is about a lack of safety features and, you know, the, a lack of parental controls around social media, and, you know, certainly warranted, so I'm just speaking in, in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments, how many, are you in favor of this? I feel like we've already discussed this ad nauseam. So I, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, discussion ad nauseam gets to me, you know.
Thank you, board. We'll, we'll begin the process. Thank you, Board. We'll begin the process. I'll contact outside council, and we'll get on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity. At this time, on the action agenda, consideration of letters of interest to fill the at-large position, I'm also going to recognize our attorney who can explain to us and to the audience how we're going to vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are six of you, and that's an even number.
Really?
That's an even number, and that can lead to ties. And as you know, a tie in a vote of a governing body basically maintains the status quo. So in order to more build consensus, I'm going to propose the following process that the board engages in. So instead of just having a motion on a particular person, any board member can nominate a person on the list, or really any person, to fill the seat. And we'll take, every board member will have the opportunity to make a nomination. Each nomination will require a second, and then each board member who made a nomination will have an opportunity to speak to their nomination, take a minute or two to speak in support of your nominee. After all the nominations are made, the board can then, we can have a discussion, to the extent of whatever discussion that you all want to have. And then we will begin voting, and this is how we're going to do the first vote. During the first vote, let's assume there are three or four nominees. You can vote for, as we will take them in the order that they've been received, been nominated, and you can vote for as many people as you like. We're trying to build consensus. So there might be multiple people who you vote for. If there's three people nominated, you may vote for two, or you may vote for three. If four people are nominated, you can vote for one, two, or three, or all four. So just as a demonstration that there were a lot of qualified people who applied for this position, and again, we're trying to build consensus. If after that first vote, there is one person that has the highest number of votes, and that is over four, that is the person that will fill the seat. If after the first vote, there are two people that are tied for the highest score, then we will have a runoff between those two people, and that runoff will just be a majority vote at that point in time. You would only get to vote once. So let me state that again. You can, on the first vote, you can vote for as many people as you want. Again, we're trying to build consensus. If there is a clear frontrunner, meaning they have the most votes and it's over four, a majority, that person will be selected to take the empty seat. If there is a tie for the top vote getter, then we will have a runoff between those two top vote getters, but that will be where you can only vote for one person. Does that make sense? All right. And so the chair may call for a break at any time, and you all are certainly welcome to ask for a break if we, if you need it, if you just need a moment to reflect and think about who you would like to vote for, or you would like to just maybe discuss it with somebody. That is not a problem. We can take a break. We're going to take this as slow and methodical as we need to. We're not going to hurry through it. We're going to do it right. And so, Madam Chair, I would suggest now, if there's no questions, I would recommend that you open the floor for nominees.
At this time, I-
Can I ask one question, just a clarifying question? Mr. Shatley, you said over four. Is it four or over?
It's four or over. I'm sorry.
That's what I wanted to make sure of.
Four or over. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Greater than or equal to? Greater than or equal to?
Oh, gotcha.
Proper math terminology.
So, all right, getting serious here. I'm opening the floor for nominations.
Madam Chair, I would like to place a nomination, Osando McPeters.
Osando McPeters?
Yes.
I'll second that. Another?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Charles Martin.
I'm going to have to ask you to, I can't believe I'm asking him to speak up, but if you'll say the name clearly, please.
Yes, I will enunciate. Charles Martin.
Okay, do you have a second?
I will second.
Okay, so that's in play. And do we have another nomination?
I do. I'd like to nominate Glenda Weinert.
Do you have a second?
I will second also.
Okay. Do we have another nomination? Hearing none, shall I move that nomination cease?
Yep.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I would give each member, starting Ms. Buchanan, to just say, have a moment to talk about her nominee, and then we'll just go in order.
Okay. Ms. Buchanan, speak into the mic.
Osando is a very capable and intelligent, articulate young man. He has a degree from Davidson in finance, which would be good when we're looking at budgets. He has a child in Buncombe County Schools, and he has volunteered in that school and mentors in that school. He is, he graduated from Asheville High. He has always lived in Asheville, and I think that this would be of benefit when we're looking at the combining of the two education systems. And finally, well, two points. He had spent many years as the diocesan coordinator for the Episcopal Church, where he was the youth coordinator, which meant for, that he looked at camps, workshops, educational opportunities, religious retreats, and everything for the youth of sixty-five churches in this diocese. And finally, I think that it would be very good for this board to have someone of color to represent that population. Thank you.
Thank you. I started saying Mr. Martin. Mr. Elliott?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Charles Martin grew up in the Shiloh community and attended Oakley Elementary School. He later went to Reynolds High School, and in his upperclassman years, worked at Reynolds High School as a custodian, and continued as a custodian shortly after his graduation. In my follow-up with Charles Martin, one thing that he clearly and passionately conveyed was two things about that time period of his life, was his love and support for our schools, and his recognition of how much love and support they need right now, especially with schools like Oakley where he went to school. He also clearly conveyed to me his pride in Buncombe County Schools from his time serving as a custodian at Reynolds High School for those three years. He was hired through a program that Arl Dalton, when he was principal there, had, I think other schools in the system had as well. But his pride that he espoused for taking care of this school so that students and teachers showed up to a clean, healthy environment to learn. He carried that love and support with him, and that pride in Buncombe County Schools throughout his life. He went to divinity school at Beulah Heights Divinity School, and at the same time was working his way up the corporate ladder at Home Depot to develop business skills, business acumen, and customer service. So in that call to serve his community of Shiloh as a pastor, he serves now as a pastor at Saint Paul Baptist Church. The one thing that strikes me the most about his application is his work over the last few years with another community organization that he hosts at his church that provides a safe learning environment for students of Buncombe County Schools and students of Asheville City Schools that receive OSS. So instead of just going home after receiving that discipline, they have a safe place to go. They provide academic instruction through the use of retired educators. They also provide some leadership training for those students so that they build some self-leadership skills when they return to school, they haven't missed too much class, and hopefully that leadership training allows them to make good decisions, and ultimately make it to, what we're all striving for is all of our students to graduate. You know, and I think about our code of conduct, character, and support that we all passed last summer, and that system of tiered discipline and with, paired with systems of support, and Mr. Martin is out there doing that work with our students in the community, and has been for years. And I think it's very, very important, brings a very important perspective to our board. Lastly, I just want to share one thing else about when I've been able to meet Mr. Martin one time in public, and that was when the redistricting law was passed. I held some town halls in the Reynolds District, and I was invited to do that at the Shiloh Community Center. And I did my best, it's a complicated topic, and I left some notable confusion in the room. Pastor Martin called me, clarified the confusion that I had left, and I later found out that he went back. He took it upon himself to take that back to his community and help clarify that redistricting law for those folks so that they were informed enough to advocate to us as a board, you know, which decision and how those decisions would play out in that community. Lastly, I'll say the Shiloh community has been split three ways over the last, I don't know how many years, decades, with roughly a third in the TC District, roughly a third in the Reynolds District, and roughly a third in the Asheville City District. Numbers are generalizations, so forgive me, it's very rough, but that's kind of the concept. And so that community itself has a very unique perspective, you know, on this concept that we're going to be wrestling with around school consolidation because they have been split three ways for so long. And Pastor Martin grew up in that environment. So anyway, I think through his unique perspective, he will bring some compassionate budget skills to our process coming up here. It will be very tricky, our budget process. He carries that love and support for our schools and our students. He has great pride in our school system, and he's out there working with students at risk right now. And I just firmly believe that he is what our school system needs right now in this time of transition to fill this vacancy temporarily.
Thank you.
Can I add something?
At this point in time, we're just allowing the people who made the nomination. We'll have discussion later.
Okay, so I can't discuss?
Yep, it's not the time for discussion.
Okay.
You can talk, but you nominated Ms.-
But I'm next, right?
Why not? So you are next.
Okay. Glenda Weinert has been a part of this community in the North Buncombe District for many years. She has years of nonprofit experience, including a member of our Children's Welfare League. Now it's known as Children's Well-Being League. She actually was our treasure and did a phenomenal job. Everything she's done has been centered around children. She is currently a board member on our Buncombe County Schools Foundation. She was the owner of Little Beaver Preschool Daycare, whatever we called it in those days, and it was a great place for our kids before they went to school. She served on the State Board of Directors for preschool, and has done a lot of work at the state level with that. Glenda had a special needs child, and she understands the EC, the Exceptional Children world, extremely well. She was very involved in the school that her son attended, and again, I've known her for many years and know her heart, and her heart is with children.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Shatley, will you guide us through this?
Absolutely. I think this time would be appropriate for any general discussion that you all have on the three nominees, or the process too, if you have questions or any other just statements about the process as well. And I would, I meant to say this in the beginning, and I apologize. I want to thank all the twenty-seven people that send in a letter. And some of those folks are here, and one spoke in public comment, and thank them for being here and for speaking. It takes a lot to put yourself out there to want to thank them too, and I apologize for not saying that upfront. But now would be, board members, be a good time for discussion, and then we will get into the first vote.
So, Mr. Shatley, you took my, what I was going to say. Twenty-five people's a lot of people who expressed interest. There are a lot of people who qualified for this role. And I'm, I've been accused of thinking too long, but I am a thinker. I think through things and try to anticipate what's best for children and our employees in Buncombe County Schools. I do want to add to Mr. Elliott's comments about Reverend Martin. I did have a chance to speak to Reverend Martin, and everything that Mr. Elliott said, I had confirmed because I had two very influential people in our community that called me specifically about Reverend Martin, and talked about how good he would be in this position, talked about the work he has done with children, particularly in the Robertson District. He grew up here, and I grew up in the Reynolds District, and Oakley was a challenging school in the seventies, and so I know, have challenging schools in Irwin, but he understands what it's like in those schools that have high needs, additional resources. So I do want to mention the fact that I got, I received those two calls this week, and talked to one of the same people last night, who encouraged me to take a look at our diversity, put our diversity lens on this. And I take that very serious too. I've said this publicly, and I'll continue to say it. We do need people who look like our children, and we have a variety of that, particularly in my district, which is why I love my district so much. So I take that to heart, and I take that to say, this is a really tough decision for me. So I just wanted to add that about Reverend Martin.
Anybody else?
I'll say one last thing if you don't mind, just about, I'll be quick, I promise you. I'm just, I feel like this has been a really positive process, and I want to thank you, Madam Chair, for this extra time we had to delve into some of these candidates. You know, this is democracy at work. We are legitimately trying our best to diligently figure out who's the best person to sit in this seat and do the good work for the students of the county, and it is impressive to see so many good-hearted people in our community that have compassion towards our public schools raise their hand and be willing to stick their name out in the public eye and do this work. And so I really just want to say thank you, and thank you to all the candidates that threw their name in the hat. It's important work.
We all do appreciate the interest that this has provided us and the opportunity to get to know people in the community.
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak on behalf of Glenda Weinert. I've had the opportunity to know Glenda for, I guess, a little over a decade now, and so I've watched her in a lot of different settings and with a lot of different populations of the community, and I do find her to be an excellent communicator. When I look at her appointments and community involvement, it's just, it's an across-the-board. There's, I really look at some, when I look at this, I don't see partisan agenda. I don't see, you know, leaning towards, you know, one agenda over the other, but I do see a common thread of involving children in a lot of her volunteering efforts. And I know that because one of the things that she's always said to me is that it's just so important for her, for Buncombe County, to continue to grow and flourish as a community, and she would love to see families that have been here for a long time, you know, continue to, you know, their children to come back and be able to find employment and raise their families. She has a huge heart for Buncombe County. She has a huge heart for children, and I've also had the opportunity to watch how she navigates some really difficult decisions in some other leadership roles that she's had in the past, and I believe she does that with a lens of just really trying to make the best choice for- with a lens of just really trying to make the best choice for the situation at hand. Losing the word I wanted to use, but it's just grace, she has a lot of grace.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I believe that we're going to take them by the way that, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, we're going to take them by the way they were first nominated, and we'll do them all three in a row. Voting is by raise of hand. Ms. Matthews and I will tally the votes. And again, you can vote for one, two, or three people. We are trying to build consensus, okay? Are there any questions before we begin the voting? Is it okay if I just call for the votes?
Please.
Okay. So first is Osando McPeters, if you want. Next is Charles Martin. Next is Glenda Weinert. Thank you. Ms. Matthews, I have Mr. McPeters at two votes, Mr. Martin at three votes, and Ms. Weinert at four votes. Is that your tally? Okay. Board members, based upon the process that we have agreed on, it will now be appropriate for a motion to elect Ms. Weinert to the vacant seat.
I'll make that motion to accept.
Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. So now we'll vote, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Is that right? Raise your hand. Did you get it? Is that five?
That was six.
No, I didn't see.
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Congratulations, Ms. Weinert. And we will make preparations to have her sworn in and prior to the next board meeting.
All right, thank you very much. This has been an arduous process, and board members have taken it extremely seriously, and we look forward to working with Ms. Weinert on this board. At this time, on the agenda is the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda is minutes for the April 26 special called work session, minutes for May 2 regular meeting, minutes for May 15 special called, minutes for May 28 special called, our personnel report, 23, 24 budget amendment six, 24, 25 CTE local plan approved, and you got subsequent information on that in your email. Buncombe County Schools District Mental Health Plan, 24, 25, student parking fees, mandatory catastrophic athletic insurance, 24, 25, mandatory student athletic insurance, 24, 25, renewal of driver education contract with Mountain Professionals for 24, 25, Inca High School Athletic Capital Outlay Request, no, that's Irwin, sorry, Inca, I tried Jeff, Robertson High School Athletic Capital Outlay Request, federal program, sole source procurement request, curriculum associates, Dreambox Learning, and Flyleaf Publishing, Great Minds, Non-L Learning, and Just Right Reader, and Wilson Language Training. Black Mountain, next item, Black Mountain Primary, approval of stormwater management Q and A. Could I get a motion to approve this consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. On the information agenda, we have the financial, finance reports, policies for first reading include policy 1760, 7280, prohibition against retaliation, policy 3620, extracurricular activities in student organizations, policy 4023, education for pregnant and parent students, policy 4040 and 7310, staff-student relations, policy 4140, foreign exchange students, policy 7130 licensure, policy 8340 insurance, policy 8510, school finance officer. And our announcements are that our next meeting will be June 27th, it'll be the last meeting of this school year, and that will be in this room at, what time?
9:30.
9:30 in the morning, the next Board of Education meeting, it will be August 1st. Our work session and closed sessions begin at 4:00 PM in the executive conference room, and open session will begin in this room at 5:30 PM. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?